Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Glad to have everybody here this afternoon. Thank you for coming. At this time, can I draft you?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll call Dr. Frazier to lead us in our invocation and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance, please.
Let us bow our heads. Most gracious and eternal God, we again thank you for this privilege and opportunity for us to come together. We thank you, God, for the county commissioners who have gathered to discuss business of our community. We thank you, God, for our citizens and also the staff of this great county. We thank you, God, for what we are going to talk about tonight and discuss. We pray, God, that you, whatever we do and say, God, it be pleasing on our side and we thank you for all that you do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, infinite and just as strong.
All right. Are there any additional items to add to the agenda?
It's Madam Chair, if we could add under new business as items, I guess it would be me. Received and offered to purchase 128 Steel Street Properties, Zerbi's Surplus Property by Brandon Adams on behalf of Ruiz Corporation.
Okay, and I think everybody has that in front of you.
Yes, I should.
Just call that your attention that you do have the paperwork in front of you. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, approval of consent agendas, their motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, public comments this evening, Mr. Steve Malloy. Good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Steve Malloy and I live at 2615 Bel Air Drive here on behalf of Adcock &amp; Associates. A few weeks ago I came and told you about a new program we were launching called Tours of Sanford and that's been pretty successful so far in our effort to get ahead of the curve on reaching people before they make a decision about whether they want to live in Sanford or not. And I mentioned that was the first step. Well, we're about to launch our second step. We realized that if people call us or email us from Zillow, they've already decided that Sanford is an option for them to live at. So we want to reach people when they're deciding Apex and Cary or Sanford, or many times we're afraid people decide Apex or Cary and don't even consider Sanford. So to hopefully combat that, we are launching a new website called, well, you can reach it from welcome to Sanford, welcome to Sanford NC dot com, welcome to Lee County, and welcome to Lee County NC dot com. All four addresses will take you to the same place. The first stage of this website will be for, hopefully to help businesses use to attract and retain employees by getting them to live close to where they work instead of driving a half hour up and down the highway. There's several industries who have complained about employees coming here, living in Apex, and after a year or two they decide they don't want to make that drive. So they get a job in Apex and the company here has lost a good employee. So we hope that this website, that will get business in industry to use it to help attract people, help retain them. And then we have other plans for it down the road. And today at our lunch meeting, the public policy, there was a lot of talk about collaboration. And we feel like that's what we're trying to do is collaborate with the public entities, the nonprofits in town, to, and not compete with them. We're not trying to do, compete with the chamber, we're not trying to compete with anybody else. What we're trying to do is work with them to come together with a package, if you will. There are a broad spectrum of things that people will come across and, you know, view things about Sanford and Lee County. And I view this, we're not trying to rev, at the wheel, we're trying to take a, our side to be kind of a hub, drawing from everyone else's, the best parts in promoting Sanford and Lee County because we've decided that's something we need to do to help not only ourselves but the whole community. Two things I'd like to ask, unfortunately we had a glitch. I was hoping to tell you, you could look at it right this second, but we had a glitch. I'll be sending an announcement out hopefully later in the week and when it does, I'd like to ask you all to look at it, see if you have any suggestions about what's there, how to present it different, better, what should be there, what might not be there, that should be, things like that. And then if you know any people with business or industry, mention it to them and see if they can't use it and to help re, attract and retain employees.
Great, thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, while he's here, I know ordinarily we don't ask questions, but I have one to thank him on.
Okay, sure, sure.
What do you have to offer in the area of affordable housing? And the reason I ask is because sometimes it seems that all we look for are the top dollar folks.
Right.
And the folks who actually do the work may not be making the top dollar.
I agree with that.
And it costs them more to get back.
And right now still most, I don't know the exact specific numbers, but most of the sales in Lee County still are at, at a price of 150 and below.
Right.
So we're still selling a lot of those homes and all agencies are pushing those.
Will you be going to the city with the same proposal you?
I'll be telling them about that tomorrow.
Why don't you encourage them to also consider affordable housing?
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing is this thing will have, well, the only place it'll have an overt advertisement for Adcock &amp; Associates is on the real estate page. Everywhere else it will simply say sponsored by Adcock &amp; Associates because the purpose is to sell the area, not sell our company.
Thank you. Okay, beginning with old business, recommendations from the planning board, Mr. Downey and Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As the Chair indicated, we have a couple of amendments I'll be presenting to you for your consideration. The first one begins on page nineteen of your packet. As you may recall, I won't go into a lot of detail of this, we presented this in detail at the public hearing. This is a amendment we did where we changed the ordinance to allow what we call, what actually the ABC calls a wine shop. You may recall that we had a request in the city to look at this, didn't, our current UDO didn't allow this. So essentially what you've got in front of you, beginning on page twenty-one, is ordinance for your consideration that we made three changes to the UDO. One, to add the use. Secondly, to add design standards related to that use as a wine shop. And then thirdly, to add a definition of what a wine shop is. And I'll pause there, Madam Chair, if there's any questions.
Will you accept the recommendation of the planning board?
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Downey? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next amendment, very similar, we presented that in detail to you. This actually doesn't affect right now the county in any way. You may recall again, the city had a situation where they had some existing non-conforming billboards. They wanted to, I guess for lack of a better description, work with the billboard industry to allow for modernization of these billboards. Essentially, beginning on page twenty-nine of your packet, you have an ordinance for your consideration that would allow, it updates the UDO to allow modernization of non-conforming billboards in City of Sanford and in the town of Broadway. Again, this doesn't affect the county right now the way it's written. And again, I'll pause there, Madam Chair, if there's questions.
I would approve.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yeah, one. So outside of the city limits, those billboards are controlled by DOT or the state or?
Outside of the city limits, you control them through your zoning and then the billboards are likely, yes, sir, I mean, they're long DOTs right away. So it'd be a combination of the two authorities. So if they're an existing billboard now, you actually allow billboards in your zoning for industrial. But some of those still may be non-conforming because they may not be spaced appropriately apart, apart from each other, things like that. So one of the things we talked about is we may end up coming back to you all in the future if we need to look at this for the county as well.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Recommendation of the planning board, Ms. Thompson. Good evening.
Good afternoon, good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. Pardon me. Van Groot Senior is seeking preliminary plat approval for a new residential subdivision to be located off Farah Road in the northeastern portion of the county. In August of this year, Copper Ridge Development purchased a 26 acre portion of a 39 acre tract of land owned by Mr. John Thomas in anticipation of developing this residential subdivision. The property again is located in the northeastern portion of Lee County and it lies east of Farah Road and south of Rock Sullivan Road. It is located west of the Raleigh Executive Jetport and it is in close proximity to Copper Ridge subdivision that was also developed by Mr. Gross in 2008. The subject property is vacant and it appears to be likely to medium wooded at this time. The land is owned to residential agricultural, which allows low density single family uses. To date, a total of three lots have been subdivided out of the tract through the minor subdivision process. A minor subdivision is limited to a maximum of six lots from a parent tract. The proposed creation of 19 lots shall be considered and approved as a major subdivision. Steps for a major subdivision include sketch plat review by the technical review committee, preliminary plat review and recommendation by the planning board, and preliminary plat approval by the Board of Commissioners. Lots in the subdivision range from 40,000 square feet, which is the minimum, to over 67,000 square feet. The streets are designated as public and they will be constructed to NC DOT standards. All lots will be served by public water and each lot will have its own private waste system. The preliminary plat was reviewed by the technical review committee on August 25th and the TRC recommended the plat be forwarded to the prospective boards for approval. The planning board reviewed the preliminary plat at their September 26th meeting and by unanimous vote, they recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the preliminary plat of Copper Ridge each subdivision as presented.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve recommendation of the planning board.
Okay, any questions or comments for Ms. Thompson? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, if you'll stay right there just one minute, please, please ma'am. Okay, Mr. Downey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know this is a little bit of an unusual step in this point. But many of you may, I'm sure, are aware that Ms. Thompson is retiring and this is actually her last board meeting with the county. So I just wanted to take a minute, I know, I know Tim, it's tough, I'm telling you.
I've tried all week to get her to change, or last week to get her to change her mind.
Many of you do, again, I don't have to say it, but she certainly had more experience with, with myself included in that, with this board. She served the citizens of this county for 25 plus years. And just want to take a minute and recognize that and, you know, just, just a round of appreciation, I think, would be, would be welcome. I just want to add a little comment here, I shared this with the Broadway board as well. One of the things I've learned over my 13 years of working with her, she has folks in the county, because the county's a little bit different than the city in terms of situations we deal with, and one of the things I always learn with her is, I knew when I went in and I asked her a question, the longer that she smiled and the longer she paused, I knew it was going to be like, I better go ahead and sit down. So, what's that, no, you go ahead.
Do you want to speak? I'd just like to say thank you all for your support that you have shown me over the 25 plus years. I have thoroughly, truly enjoyed my job serving the citizens of Lee County and working for Sanford and the town of Broadway. Thank you very much. Hope to see you around.
Hope to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your money and run.
Oh, gosh. Now, we're certainly going to miss you. We appreciate everything you've done for us, Ms. Thompson.
Thanks.
It's going to be a hard one to replace, for sure. Okay, moving on to new business. The approval of the early cutoff reporting time in the register of deeds office, Ms. Brett. Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners. I have in your package a memo, I have a request I would like to make. The register deeds would like to request an early cutoff time for the recording of documents. I request permission that this time be set at 4:30 PM daily. This 4:30 cutoff time is for the recording of documents only. I feel this is necessary at this time as a preventative for comp time and overtime. When an attorney, an abstract or a legal assistant enters our office at 4:55 with a three or four section document and these pages continue to go up, in fact, page number just went up today, to 35 doc, 35 pages for a deed of trust, if they have three or four of those in succession, we are unable to get the documents recorded by 5:00 PM, state mandated cutoff time, balance cash drawers accurately and clock out by 5:07, which prevents the overtime or comp time. One deed of trust can be ex, in excess of 30 pages, I wrote this up before it went to 35 pages. October 1st, 2016, the number of pages will be allowed to increase. And some documents pages are not always pre-numbered. For accuracy, we count and then double count the number of pages to determine if the funds are correct. There are sometimes requests by a legal person for a copy of all these documents that has been recorded. My staff is very efficient and detail oriented and they do not like to leave the office at the end of the day with work left undone. We feel when the documents are recorded, they should be numbered, scanned and indexed before we leave that day. Our previous register did not pursue this early cutoff time, hoping that the state legislator would mandate a 4:30 cutoff time decision. This did not come to pass and it is not on any agenda for discussion at the legislative level at any time in the foreseeable future that I know of. And I was just at the register deeds conference and it did not come up. I have taken the liberty of sending a statewide email to all registers requesting their input. Of the 65 counties that responded, 26 have early cut, recording cutoff times. Many have had these cutoff times for 10 years or longer and I have a, an attachment to show the different counties and their cutoff times. I was given spec, given several good pieces of advice from these registers. Number one, seek approval from your county commissioners to solidify the decision so that it cannot be questioned by anyone in the public in the future. Do not accept documents to hold overnight, you're opening yourself to liability. And the cutoff time must be absolute, no exceptions. The marriage license cutoff time of 4:30 PM is already in place and has been since 2004. The office of the register deeds will remain open until 5:00 PM daily for the public to obtain certified copies of births, deaths, marriages, phone calls and questions of any kind. This request to assist, is to establish a recording cutoff time of 4:30 for legal documents only. If approved, we will notify the public and attorneys, local attorneys, by posting signs in our office, placing notices in our attorney's mailboxes and placing a statement on our website. If approved in October 2016, these notices will go up immediately stating that the new cutoff time will begin effective January 1st, 2017. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Chair, move to approve the cutoff time at 16:30 or 4:30 in the afternoon.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
What kind of, what kind of problem are you having right now?
Well, if we have an attorney comes in and it's five or 10 minutes till five.
No, I understand that, what I'm asking, are you having a number of people come in every day, every week or what?
Not every day, but it's frequently and it's usually on Fridays, once or twice a week maybe. And when you get a 35 page deed of trust, if they have three of them, that's over 100 pages right there that we've got to get ready. And the employees just feel really stressed out to keep from trying to acquire that comp. We can't record after 5 o'clock anyway, it's against North Carolina law.
What is that, what is that mean time? 35 pages means nothing to me. What's the time involved for 35 pages?
It involves indexing every name on that document and getting it scanned.
It's like 15 minutes, 30 minutes, hour, what does it take in time?
It could take 15 to 20 minutes, yes, sir. The, the more documents, the longer it takes and.
Have you spoken with any of the lawyers that come through?
Uh, no, sir.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to ask what Robert just did. I mean, is there a trend in attorneys? Is it the same attorney or?
It's the same attorney, yes, sir.
Do you think if, do you think if you had a conversation with that attorney or attorneys, that they would minimize or, or maybe not do it in the future, you think?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Other than.
I have to cut the lights out sometimes to ask him to leave.
Other than waiting, what kind of inconvenience would this put on the attorney, trying to get these documents recorded?
They could only wait till the next day to record them. But, you know, if it's a power of attorney or something like that, it's not necessary that, not completely necessary that that, if it was dated three months ago and they're just bringing it in at five minutes to five on this, that particular Friday, it's not necessarily urgent that it be recorded that day.
Just need to come before 4:30.
Yeah.
Well, the only reason why I would see is that he's trying to cut a check for that day. That's the only thing I can think of, right? People want their money, the closing's happening now, let's get it done.
But now, these other offices that have this, if that is the case, they make it known to the banks, their banks and whoever they're dealing with, that they have a cutoff time and they have to get the money there by 4:30 to get it recorded or they won't get it recorded that day.
No, actually I'm just saying.
And, and some of these counties have had it for many years, dating back in, one as far back as 2000.
But, I mean, I particularly like in your plan about, you know, notifying the attorneys and then if, if this is approved tonight and then not going into effect till January of 17, that's plenty of time for them to adjust to, to the new, new rule. The only thing I thought of was, and, and I don't know how often this happens Pam, but you know, if you would have somebody coming from out of town or something, you know, if maybe you could also put something on the phone.
Yes, we could do that.
You know, just, just as a heads up, saying, you know, if you're calling about, you know, recording that, you know, our rules are changing, you know, then it'll go into effect January 1st.
That's a nice idea, we could do that.
Just, you know, just somebody coming out of town that maybe we would miss. Because I'd hate for somebody to come a long way and then not get here till quarter to five.
But we do, we do have out of town attorneys that will call us to verify if we have a cutoff time or not.
Right, so, so maybe just putting that on the phone might save you from having to, to address that. Okay, any more questions?
I do have one more. You mentioned that the state cutoff time is 5 o'clock?
5 o'clock, yes, sir.
And you want us to approve 4:30?
4:30.
And will we be going against the policy?
No, sir, their time is that you can record up until 5 o'clock. They don't care if you cut off beforehand.
Okay, got you.
But you cannot record past at 5:01 because then that brings in legal questions.
Got you.
Would, would it make you a lot of difference if, if we finalize this at our next meeting as opposed to this meeting and maybe you post a couple of signs on your door or on the website so that people that use your services will know over the next couple of weeks? That gives us a feel for what might come before this board. It doesn't bother me one way or the other, but I, I understand where you're coming from. But it's sort of like.
No, sir, I don't have a problem with that if I can tell them to call you if they have a problem with it. Because I'm sure they will.
And I'm sure I'll answer, but I'm just.
The reverse can be, you can also change it back, can't you? You got, I mean, you're saying.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You can always give feedback and then change it back if it becomes a headache, vice versa.
I'd just like to head off the headaches and just sort of get a feel, but I'm fine, I'm.
Okay, okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve the request by Ms. Brett to change the recording cutoff time to 4:30 PM. All those in.
Sure, sure.
I understood when I said that we can change this back if we need to later on, if it comes up to be a problem.
And we have a few months to do it too, I guess, if you want to revert, it doesn't take.
I mean, I, I would think, well, I mean, you know, if we approve it tonight and then she gets feedback or we get feedback between now and January 1st, that that's going to be a problem, then we can readdress it.
Right, okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's, I'm just giving that as an option.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Hopefully that'll work out better for your, you and your staff. Okay, the, the next item, the appointments to local firemen's relief fund board?
Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners, in your packet you have a request to appoint two board commissioner members to the local firefighters relief fund boards. This is typically done every year in October and then Lisa Minner reports that in at the mark to the state.
Okay.
Move to accept the recommendation coming from.
There's no recommendation.
We need to appoint.
It's just, yeah, no, well, no, what he's got is, you know, it, it had been.
Appoint two commissioners to serve on the board above reference board, rather. Huh? I'm not sure what to.
Well, you have currently Commissioner Dar Ripple and Commissioner Smith are those representatives, but y'all are both up for election at this point. So our issue was, we didn't want to see him.
To assume.
To assume, yeah.
So you have four commissioners that are eligible to fill out.
Right, and we have Commissioner Sloan, Commissioner Olin, who, who have fire board experience and fireman experience. This board does not normally meet unless there's an issue.
Once in 10 years.
We hope that we never have to meet.
Absolutely.
That's right.
We hope that we never have to meet.
I'll take that one.
Just jinx yourself.
I'll take my turn.
Okay, well, we've got Commissioner Reeves and Commissioner Sloan. Okay, do you want to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, so there's a motion? So.
I'm B, you guys spoke first.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Reeves and Commissioner Sloan to be the two commi, commissioners to serve on our local firemen's relief fund board.
Madam Chair, excuse me, but you've got two different boards, you've got one to serve with Mr. Andrews and then the other one to serve on the Cape Fear board. So you need to designate which board.
Well, Commissioner Sloan would need to be on the Cape Fear, correct.
And, and Commissioner Reeves would be on the other.
Sir?
No, I'm fine.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Sloan would need to be on the Cape Fear board.
Right.
Oh, okay. Is that right?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay.
How would you want to have?
Do you have a quick update on Matthew?
I was telling Mr. Crumpin earlier, the 2 o'clock update had two storm models coming in. The 5 o'clock update, I think, had 10, 11, 12 of the models coming in.
The spaghetti cluster.
We're still too far out really to get a good handle on what the storm's going to do. There's a lot of variables, typically 72 hours out is when they'll start to narrow it down. So hopefully Wednesday afternoon, we'll have a better feel of what's going to happen with the storm. The latest update we had, we're looking at probably a half a inch of rain here unless something changes greatly. And you know, it'll be windy here and we could have some storms moving through, but we definitely need to watch it. The storm could take a hook and come in like Hugo, it could go out to sea. And somewhere in between those two, we'll have Matthew. But we are starting to do our preparations, checking equipment. The state's going to activate tomorrow afternoon, so they'll stand their EOC up and we'll probably be doing the same Thursday afternoon. And then we'll keep you updated.
All right, just let us know what you want. Thank you, Shane.
Could you call a board meeting next week?
Only if we need to, and let's hope we don't need to.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I said a board.
Okay, approval to apply for National Association of County and City Health Officials grant funding, Mr. King. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chair and board members. The first piece of information out in front of you is just something we've done the last two years. We've applied for nature of funding through the FDA, we've received approximately, I think, about $15,000 in that grant. Seven in one year and I think eight in the other. This is just their third year and we're looking to apply once more. No county match.
Okay, we've got a unanimous question here. Okay, all right, any questions or comments? Okay, all right, any questions or comments for Mr. Kane? Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for looking out for the county.
Yes, yes.
We're trying our best.
And then approval to write off bad debt collections?
Yes, Madam Chair, this second abstract is a um piece of information we have to provide to the board through accreditation. We presented to the Board of Health uh earlier, and this is presented to the Board of Commissioners, just an update for our family planning, family planning, maternal health and child health services. Um, this bad debt write-off that we have to present, uh, we still pursue uh reactivating the accounts if they come in. But this is representative of individuals who haven't been within the last year of uh for service. Those accounts do get reactivated if they do show. And this is part of our consolidated agreement which was signed earlier in the year for the multitude of grants, our agreement addendums that we receive. These are our essential services for the state.
It does seem to have trended down from last year as far as.
Kind of card machine, I think it's helped some.
Yep.
And we've also, I've seen a lot since I've been upstairs, a lot of individuals that have been put on payment plans.
Oh, and that helps.
And that, we're really stressing that, yes ma'am, so it has come down some.
Good, good, good. I think most people do wanna pay their bills, it's just n- not able to all at one time.
We do have, we do have some that still think that it is free service and that.
Sure, sure, I understand. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Kane?
Move to approve.
Okay, have a motion, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, our, yes sir.
I have a, I have a question, uh, I'm at the Ms. Brett, no, no, not you, no, thank you.
Oh.
I just wanna, Ms. Brett, will you be putting uh the change on your website? Did you cut off?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, on our website.
All right, I mean, we approved the night, go ahead and put it on there so that people.
Okay, yes, sir, I will.
Okay, um, our next item was the one that Ms. Parrish added and you have that um bit of information stapled together in front of you. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Parrish, no, that's not, no, it's okay.
We received an offer on on Friday from Brandon Atkins uh on behalf of, to Bo- is that to Boys, is that not saying that correctly?
Yeah, Ty, yes.
Ty Boys, okay, corporation, um, so the offer to purchase one twenty-eight Steel Street, um, the offer is, was for ten thousand dollars, um, at this time he has deposited, five percent deposit um with the county and has also um paid the advertising fee if it's, um, if the offer is um approved this evening. And according to one fifty-three A, one seventy-six, and statute one sixty-eight, two sixty-nine, um, if the board accepts this tonight, then we can um put it in the newspaper and advertise it for extra deals. And that would be the the process that it will take.
Move to approve.
Okay, any questions or comments from Ms. Parrish?
We have nothing to do with the parking.
No worries. Um, and and this is our our typical, um, the the ten day.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Right.
All right, got a motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
All right, moving right along uh to the monthly financial report, Ms. Minter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, you should have the August financial report, starting on page fifty-three. As you can see, our tax revenues for the month of August twenty sixteen are quite a bit ahead of the same timeframe last year. Um, we are attributing that to A or some taxpayers paying their bills early, which we are appreciative of, that's that much longer we can earn interest on those funds. Um, as far as expenditures go, the target was sixteen, roughly sixteen percent. As explained to you last month, we are, several departments are still exceeding that due to the insurance bills, maintenance contracts, dues, et- um, et cetera, that are paid in the first part of the fiscal year for the full, full year. As you can see, we are quite a bit better shape this month thanks to those taxes being paid versus where we were this timeframe last year. Again, you see no sales tax because that runs three months behind, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, county managers' report.
Yes, ma'am, normally I I give my full report at the uh next, the second meeting, but I went ahead and put the T R C um agenda and the attachments uh in here to show the activity that's going on, especially the conceptual drawing for the s- State Employees Credit Union off of Bragg Street. Um, you see that in the conceptual drawing, they do have our um road th- in there.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and they they agreed to do what we've asked them to do as far as that. And I know that Marshall and his staff is work, is working with them right now to make sure that that's built to D O T specifications, so. It's a good thing, and then also wanted to see that they, uh, the community college had been before the T R C for the Health Sciences Building and the Wicker Center um addition. So, that's um moving along and with the groundbreaking on Thursday, um, things are starting to progress with that. And uh, we will probably have our bond sale first or second week of February.
Okay.
And there's a lot of work that has to be done between now and then. Uh, we do have to be rerated by the bonding agencies and um, you know, we'll be getting prepared for that pretty soon to either go to New York to do that or hopefully they'll be in the state of North Carolina so we don't have to travel up there. But if not, then we'll have to go.
Hopefully they'll come here, that being. Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Crumpin? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Commissioner's comments. Mr. Kane?
Uh, before our meeting tonight, I attended the new commissioners meeting, there were fourteen youngsters working on nominations for their officers and passing their bylaws. They're like working on their calendar for next year.
Chuck, good night.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I have on my pink for uh October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and I think other people had that in mind as well, um. Also, um, I attended the Triangle J Council of Government and they have started a blog to try to keep the public up to date. Um, so be looking for that in your county email. Um, and they also uh just concluded an Affordable Housing Summit and Information Program um, in the past few weeks, which I thought was very good. Um, and then don't forget about uh this Thursday, gross farms, um, from, I think it's from nine is when it starts, but uh.
Nine thirty registration.
Nine thirty registration for uh the North Carolina uh Conservation Farm families, so uh
Mm.
please support them if you can, um, they've done a fabulous job for the county. Um, and that's it.
I'd like to ask Mr. Crumpin, will next meeting update us on the uh refuse center on Colton Road?
Yes, sir.
Where we are on that, and also on the junkyard, where we are on that? And again, I'd like to express my thoughts that we'd still need to work on trash in the county.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna talk about it till
Till it's gone.
people get out of here.
Right. You're absolutely right. Commissioner Reeves?
I'm happy about the ride or cup. I'm really sad because.
Answers.
I just think, that was a big late night.
Just just to give you, they uh, they had a bet between Pinehurst and I think St. Andrews. And uh, St. Andrews has, had to uh raise the Pinehurst all day today.
Oh, my gosh, that's pretty good.
That's a good lick.
That is pretty good. Um, two things, real quick. Uh, Saturday, I was at the ribbon cutting for Habitat for Humanity and Habitat for Birds in the Habitat offices, um, at at the old grocery store site there on Wicker Street and was really well attended and just, they did a great job. Had had um all their volunteers there and food trucks and music and the radio stations, so lots of entertainment and no excuse for going away hungry. And they they have just done an amazing job with that building, looking at the before and after pictures. Um, it 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 certainly um is nice to see that um all polished up and being utilized. Um, and for a great cause too. Um, I did not realize Mr. Cherry was as involved as he is, it's nice to hear some of his stories. And they're starting their thirty-second home uh in Lee County and this is their twenty-ninth year. So, just um special group of folks. And I was also asked to bring this to the board for your consideration. Um, I think uh Ms. Lee also was contacted about it, but um we have a board meeting scheduled the same night as Farm City, we think. And those on the Ag Advisory Council were asking us to consider a time change, a day change. They'd love to have the commissioners there, I think most commissioners usually attend, so I'm just putting it out there for discussion for you gentlemen.
Kind of Farm City stop.
Doctor said five thirty is kind of the little reception thing and then dinner at six. Isn't that correct? Did I get that right? Did I get that right? Okay, I didn't write it down, I just.
You hadn't ever been, they have awesome breakfasts or something. Well, I've been. I don't think I've been.
Just been.
No.
So, um.
I thought we even started early, we got up at that.
Well, I think we have done that in the past, well, uh, you know, when we met at three o'clock, it wasn't a concern. You know, we would just be finished and then go straight over there, um.
Well, we made it three this time, would that give us time to to get there?
I would.
Mm.
If we don't have a overtime again.
Well, it's typically a short meeting, cause it's the last meeting of the old board.
Yeah.
Before the the new board is seated on September fourth.
Uh, yeah, it'll be the second meeting in November.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to know about public care in spring November, I know there's one for the next meeting in October, but I don't know about Thursday. That would be my.
Well, just tell them we don't have time for one.
Well, I mean, that's up to you, do you wanna do it early or do you wanna move it to Tuesday?
Could could we, could we do, could, could.
Madam Chair, move to, move that we reschedule meeting time for three o'clock, uh, the twenty-first of November?
Is it the same day?
Mm-hmm.
The same day?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Is is the twenty-first second?
Y- yes, yes, sir, you know, yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't give the date at first, I just. Yeah, it's 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 typically the Monday before Thanksgiving. Okay, so.
Could, could, I know that um Commissioner uh uh Smith has made that motion and I'm, and I was just consulting with uh with Dr. Connect and he said that he can make four and I was just trying to make some exceptions for him, if four would be, give us time to handle business.
That gives us two hours.
Um, I'll amend my.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking four, I was thinking.
Okay. Okay. This would.
So.
Well, I'll go over there and break bread together, okay, that sounds good.
Four.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, um, Commissioner Smith to to change his motion to four o'clock on the twenty-first?
If you want to move the motion.
All those in favor say aye, opposed?
Aye.
This is which meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Which meeting is this?
Twenty-first, November twenty-first, and so I'll 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 let um
You you're going to?
Mr. Stone know that we've made that adjustment. So, make sure they save us a plate in case we're sliding up at four o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, next item of my business?
I move we go into closed session to consider personnel matter per North Carolina statute one forty-three, three eighteen.
Um, okay, hold on one second.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a a real quick announcement, I forgot to when I was up here before.
No, 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 it's okay. It's okay.
Um, just a reminder to you all, the planning use plan meetings are this week and for the public. Um, the tomorrow evening is at Deep River and Thursday is at Greenwood. Uh, tomorrow evening also at five thirty, if you have the chance, we're inviting the planning board members and the members of this board to come out and get kind of a, a one-on-one session with our consultants and kind of have to drop in, it's very informal, but it's very informative. They've been very successful, we had two meetings last week, one with the town of Broadway and Commissioner Sloan, believe you were at that one. Um, and then uh we had one at uh the civic center mainly kind of for the city residents. Um, they're open to anyone, anyone from city, county can come, in fact, we've had folks from the county attend some of these already, but just wanted to remind you that the two that are kind of focused on the county, the unincorporated areas are this week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Move we go into closed session to consider personnel matter per North Carolina general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-six.
Okay, we're now in closed session, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.